Yeah, that was the best. Alright, so I would make a motion to go to Action, Unfinished Business A. Any discussion?
I'll go ahead with you.
On favor?
Hi.
Aye. Alright Jennifer, that is you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. As I stated last Monday that we were headed into the Red Fast, well since then on October 29th, we became a high-risk community. This means that over the past two weeks residents have tested positive for COVID-19 on an average daily rate of eight or more. Being a high-risk community, we are back to Phase 3 Step 1 and will remain at that high risk until we have three consecutive weeks of low-risk reporting. We've adapted some guidelines to reduce the risk of COVID-19. The guidelines are based on information that's provided by the CDC, DLS, and other public officials. We ask that everyone help and take these guidelines seriously and try to follow the guidelines diligently so that we can return to a healthy community fast. COVID-19 is everyone's responsibility. We have posted information on the website in the hopes to remind everybody of the importance of COVID-19 and some steps that they, just as a reminder of what they can do. We posted a Help Community Stop COVID Notice. The library has reverted back to Phase 3 Step 1. We ask that the Board of Selectmen meetings have their guests and residents revert back to the Zoom or dial-in at this time. We ask that only one person be in the assessor's or tax collector's office at a time. The playground off limits at the time. We've been in touch with the CEIT, which is the COVID Enforcement and Intervention Team, to do a reverse 911 to residents. We will also be doing a town reverse 911 tomorrow. This will state that COVID-19 is a serious threat in Glanford. To wear a mask, wash your hands, keep your distance, do not share food, drinks, or utensils. Stay home if sick, get a COVID-free test. Stop gatherings with family and friends, protect you and your loved ones. And then of course, if there's more information needed, you're welcome to go to map.gov/stopcovid19. We have also asked for information on quick testing. Should fam- and if families need isolation stations, what is available to us as a town? Also, the governor put into effect as of Friday, the 6th, that face masks are to be worn regardless of the six feet distance, whether you're indoors or outdoors. Also from 9:30 PM to 5 AM, he's got a stay-home order, unless of course it's an emergency. And there'll be no alcohol served or purchased between those times as well. On the good side is that we have only had one positive in the past four days. So I feel that we might be on that trend of good, but we do have to keep it up for three weeks.
We have to keep up one in four days for three weeks? Or no more cases for three weeks?
Nope, we have to stay at the low risk.
What constitutes low risk?
A low risk?
Yeah.
Like what we were at before. So if we say maybe have one now and if you get one more in another week, as long as you don't rise up to eight within, or 10 within, you know, five to eight days. I mean, we, we, and, and it's not a cluster. That, that is part of our issue. There's not one specific spot this is coming from. This is all ages. And these are not like in one family.
So how many cases total have we had in Glanford now?
So you have now, including the ones from previously, you've had 12, I mean, I'm sorry, 13.
So Jennifer, you mentioned that the playground limits, is that posted somewhere?
No, we're gonna have to put that on the website and if it's possible, maybe get John Hoppy, or Hoppy whatever, to maybe put some tape or something around the area. I don't know how many kids are there and use it.
So you're talking about closing it? Or you're talking about limiting the amount of kids that are there at once?
Closing it.
Yeah, because you can't regulate the kids, nobody's around to do it.
Right. That's correct. We can't regulate any of this because we're a small town and we can't be everywhere at once. And we're just hoping that people help out and do their due diligence, that's all.
Maybe we can just get a sign or something?
Yeah.
Maybe we can just order one?
I think putting a caution tape around it's the best idea.
I think it makes it look like a police zone, the time they got killed there.
Well, what are you gonna do? You're gonna protect the people or you're just gonna fiddle around?
I feel like the cautions, I, I understand the caution tape, it just feels a little heartbreaking to put it around the playground.
The whole thing, Tara, is heartbreaking.
I know, I know, I know. Can, can we, can we get some signs?
What?
Can we get two signs made and posted on either side? You know, playground closed due to high-risk COVID.
Yeah, we can try and get that done.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, like I'm trying to think on, with both sides of my brain right now. And I'm just thinking children too, like seeing like a, it looks like a crime scene is sort of horrifying.
I don't think caution tapes wanna make it look like a crime scene.
I don't know. I just hate all of this.
Try your signs and see how they work out.
You know, but you know, I don't know if people are gonna obey the signs. I, I don't. I don't know. I just want the kids to be safe because this is no longer a thing to say that it doesn't affect kids anymore because that is so untrue.
Yeah.
And I just, and I want our kids to be safe.
Can we add that to our reverse 911?
About the playground?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Let's add it to the reverse 911 and throw a couple signs up there and then maybe, yeah, just some sort of tape maybe? We can ask Hoppy what he thinks too. Yes, thank you, that's a good point, close the gates. Because it's, it's discouraging people from driving and parking in there.
But can't they walk? I mean, you can't.
Yeah, but I think just closing the gates sort of shows that it's not open for traffic. Please don't drive and park.
I think if you close a gate, you're getting the idea across.
Yeah, I think that-
You're getting the what?
Getting the idea across.
I think that makes sense.
It just stops people from walking and-
Well, people will walk, they're just, it's just please don't drive in and park and use the playground. I think that's typically what happens.
Well, I think one of the things that it may stop is, and I'm sorry to see it happen, but we've watched the Mennonites with their kids over here. You know, we've gotta convey the idea to them too.
Any of the big gatherings.
From where?
Just from any of the, you know, the gatherings that have taken place. Like you said, it is getting colder, so I think that we're probably, we'll see less anyways.
Any gathering of, that's gonna consist of 50 people or more, as soon as you hit a gathering of 50, the Board of Health is to be notified.
I thought it was 10, are we, we're at 50?
An outdoor gathering, not a family gathering. So if they're gonna do a family, you can have no more than 10 people in your home. And I find this very hard, even being a Board of Health member because it's my home.
Yeah.
And I just feel, never mind, I, I can't.
It's giving tough.
But they're indicating that you should have only 10 people, but there's certain circumstances where they allow more than that if it's like, say, a funeral or a wedding. But you're limited on that as well and you have to notify the Board of Health.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll do that, I'll add to the reverse 911 tomorrow and get some signs up.
Okay, thank you Jennifer.
Okay, thanks.
Have a good night. Alright, so let's go back up and go into order. We've got meeting minutes from October 26. I just had a thought to add, did you, we say something about our animal control officer completing the reports, the state reports that had been requested? It's not in the minutes, but I, I feel like in the discussion we said something about her completing reports that had, I know that Eric had been on that.
Quarterly reports?
Yes. Can we, so my only request would be that we add that to the minutes just because I think it's kind of important. We talked about, we did it last week, we did it a few weeks ago.
Yeah, it's been about a month.
But we said it last week, I think. Didn't Josh say, like as part of her review?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we can add in here each of the identified accomplishments, which includes organizing and then writing forward quarterly reports.
I just think it's important when we look at like when we didn't reappoint our last ACO and then our current ACO, that some of the goals that we had been requesting are now being accomplished. That, that's sort of where I was heading with it. So I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from 10:26 with amendments. Is there any discussion or any other? Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
So I think I can sign it because we approved it with the amendments? Or do you want us to wait on signing?
Approved.
Okay. You can't take my pen.
I have a red pencil.
I'm gonna give you a marker. How do you like them apples?
I don't, you didn't sanitize it before you.
Alright, is there any?
My apples are sour cream.
Thank you, here you go. So Steve, you're on the agenda, but are there any other, there's no other audience participation?
No, no, basically I just, what I gave to Joanne just backed up the point that I was making last week about the PERC not being good and it's the laws, guidelines right there.
So what we'll do is, we already did, so I'll make a motion to go to, the, is, do we have Rainey? Do we have Rainey on the line now or do we wait for her? Okay, so New Business 6A, is there a second? Discussion? On favor?
Yep.
Alright, so, Steve, as you guys know, addressed us last week about concerns with the way that the PERC test was done at the salt shed for the new highway garage. We've got some new documents here and we have Rainey on the line here at this 6A. The actual PERC test, which is like reading another language to me. Yes, go ahead Steve.
So can I address a point that I forgot to last week, Tara?
Sure.
That Tom had brought up, that it went an inch in a minute. Just to give you a little perspective.
One view and Tom.
Mine right across the street from where the PERC was done, that whole area is all clay.
Okay.
Mine went an inch in 47 minutes. So that should be suspected it went an inch in a minute. It's because it was done and brought in film.
Okay. I'm trying to see where- You alright?
Yeah, thanks.
Everybody good?
Um, okay. I don't understand how long this is saying.
Yeah, he's got it, he's doing a PERC test and filled it to 40 rounds. Now Rainey told me that he'd done some research on this, so I kinda like to hear what he's found. And then we can address, maybe, Steve, a bit concerned.
Rainey, are you with us? Oh, we gotta unmute him.
He was taking a tree out from the front of his house. He's on the line.
He's on the phone line?
No, he's, he's on the line, he's-
This is where we go, Bueller? Bueller? Are you texting him?
Yeah.
We're trying to check.
Oh my God, until they're not.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Yeah.
We gotcha. Alright, so we've got, Steve is here with us again today with his concern about the way that the, about the results of the PERC tests. So you had done some research and had some information to share, is that correct?
Well, yes, partially, but more importantly, I reviewed all the testing on that. I was present. And the individual who done the testing actually quite impressed me with his thoroughness and his detail as far as everything. We had done a number of digs, at one point, we had done one dig and at about seven and a half feet, we hit ledge, so we had to move over.
Okay.
We dug a couple test pits that almost hit 11 feet. But his actual testing was within the state specs and it was at six feet. I believe he had a couple at 60 inches and I, I don't have the report in front of me, so I'm going by memory on this. But he had done them and he had, we had to dig a ramp out so he could walk in and out without having to go into a pit to where we had to put barriers up and, and actually have a trench permit. But he did the testing for what they call modeling and absolutely found no problem whatsoever. He did testing on the soils at different levels. In his report, he marched down the types of soil that's there. There was one issue about certain materials in the area that he found unsatisfactory and that would have been the pile of millings, which we have to remove. But he did the test in three different spots and then he did the PERC testing, which is according to the state spec. The best I could get out of the readings in his, in his reports was the levels of soil that was in there and the different types of soil no longer became topsoil, it was compacted earth. And we had dug down to where we, I call it bone, but it basically was a lot of rock and earth and no, no ledge at that point. So that's in the areas he did the testing. He put a nice map on the, on the report as to how it was done. They all passed without even being close to the minimal. And that being said, the, we had Brett there from the Health Department witnessing it. And again, we, we just basically went along with what he declared, what spots we should be doing. And he did do an extensive walk-around to look at the area to see that, the way he put it to me was, we're gonna test the most problematic areas I can find. So, that being said, they passed. And again, the only thing I can say on this is, I am in no way, shape, or form able to contest his findings. He's the licensed expert at it. And the Health Department witness agreed concurrently that everything was fine. And we had to put in tubes so that in the future, should it wanna be retested, we would be retesting the exact same spots so that we, if we should change the footprint of the, the design, we would know whether we were, we were testing within the footprint or outside it and whether it would require further testing. So at that point, at that point, we refilled the ditches and some of them I will say were nine plus feet in depth. So we had to, we had to backfill them just for public safety. And again, we have pipes in the areas that were actually perked. And I find no, no reason why I could contest why his tests weren't completely accurate due to the fact that he did note the different soils and he did note the different layers and we came across no clay per se. And to be honest, I've been in areas where we've dug roads up and half of the road's clay and the other half isn't. So properties change quite a bit throughout an area. Whether we were in a clear, clay area and it's been built up over the years, I don't know. But considering that we went nine, 10, and more in depth and did not hit clay, I, I have to assume that everything was fine. And over a period of years, the soil that may have been added in has become packed to be basically solid earth.
Okay. Steve, do you have a question for Rainey?
Yeah, Rainey, are, are you aware that there was probably anywhere between six and 14 to 16 feet of fill brought in, depending on where you are on that site? That has all been brought in. When you go into the gate, you look to the left, it's about three, four feet deep. And as you go over towards EverSource where the test was done, that was about six to seven feet of brought in fill. I mean, you know, you're not supposed to test in that. And if you test it below that, that's fine. But then you're supposed to have separation down to the bottom below that as, as Mr. Searle should be aware of. And I would be suspect that it went an inch in a minute because mine right across the street went an inch in 47. That whole neighborhood, where it's not rock, is all clay. There's no good material in that neighborhood. So I would be suspect about the breakout and having problems with it two, three years down the road.
And, and I understand that, but again, not trying to be evasive on this other than the fact that we did do a couple of our own digs in it and we exceeded nine and 10 feet and, and really hit nothing but what I call bone. Large rock, earth material, nothing that would be consistent with a fill. The other thing on that too was what, the very first spot we had, he had us move because we actually hit lead in six feet. So I'm just going by, I understand if there's been a lot of fill brought in there, but I understand it's been through the years. At one point, does it become a base or when is it just fill? That area is compacted so tight, again, I have to go by the expert's opinion that he tested the levels, he notated the differences in materials as the depth went down, he took soil samples, and should his soil samples come back and say it's not appropriate, then I would say you are probably accurate and right on that point. But until we get those actual soil samples back, his actual, his actual PERC testing came out to exactly what he said and, and you had the Health Department, Brett, there witnessing it. I'm not saying my guys or myself made that determination. That was him and that was the Health Department witnessing it and agreed with it. So at that point, until we come back with soil samples telling us differently, I have to accept that as a proper reading.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call him out and tell him that he was looking the other way. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to address something here. The number one hole in the C layer tested in 10 minutes per inch. And number one hole in the B layer tested at six minutes per inch. And the number two test site tested at seven per inch. The 10 minutes is not so far from yours.
Yeah, well, what depths were those B and C layers though, Tom? That's what my question-
Well, one of them's at, two of them are 36 inches.
Right, in the broadened soil.
And one is at 14 inches.
At the broadened soil. Exactly. In the, at, they're, they're done in the broadened soil. And that's not virgin soil. That's why that, that rule number eight on the second page that I gave you says-
Yeah, but you also, I, I think we oughta talk with the DEP on that.
Yeah, I think we should get another opinion because I don't think Mr. Searle's being accurate when he says that that's testable soil.
I would be awful surprised if he wasn't. But I guess at this point, to appease everybody, we should talk with the DEP. They're the ones that wrote this title five. So they're the ones to interpret it.
Okay, so do we send, reach out to DEP rep and send them a copy of the PERC test and just ask them for their opinion? Is that what you're suggesting, Tom?
I would suggest first you call over here. Talk to whoever's got something to do with PERC test. Tell them the story, see if they wanna see the results and go from there.
Eric, what are your thoughts?
It looks like the concerns that Steve has have all been noted in the test. Where they struck bedrock, where the person observed disturbed soil or disturbed fill material.
I mean, it sounds like, you know, from listening to Rainey, that it was done thoroughly. And everything was noted.
I don't wanna be disagreeable, but I don't feel qualified to interpret the PERC test. And I don't know what Rainey's got to say, but I, I really can't.
I guess-
I would like-
Go ahead Rainey.
Again, I am definitely not expert. From what I have checked into, this gentleman has an extensive amount of experience. He's highly regarded. He is, he holds a license and I'm not sure that he would be willing to jeopardize his license for the mere $600 that Tom paid him. The only thing I can say on that is, from when I was talking with him, he seemed to be very acute to what the area was and what the state specs are for the testing. But that being said, I'm not adverse to turning around and placing some calls. Personally, I think I would call a gentleman I know a DEP, Dan LaPrada. He's a very hardcore guy, but he's very concise and very straightforward. If he thinks there's an issue, he would let me know in a heartbeat. As far as bringing DEP in, I think that would be, really, I think that would be way beyond what we need to do. If worst-case scenario, we would have to do a second testing.
Um, my thoughts, Rainey, are, I guess, I feel like when we sit here as a board, we rely on our professionals to do what they're- I guess I, I feel like when we sit here as a board, we rely on our professionals to do what they're professionally hired to do. So. You know, we, we rely on you as the highway super to oversee these things and your opinion. We rely on Brett Hartley to oversee these things and his opinion. Um, and obviously you guys have done work to hire someone that was, you know, well esteemed to do, to do the perk test. Having said that, um, with concerns, I think that you giving a call to Dan LaPrade and having a discussion with him would be beneficial.
No, not Dan. Correction, not Dan LaPrad.
Okay.
Dan LaPrad is for water. Dan Kappatrick would be the one I would speak to.
Yeah, whoever is your, you know, your DEP. Um, having that conversation and then, you know, also waiting on the soil test to come in. And just taking a look at how those results come back. It, I would feel comfortable with that circumstance as far as. Feeling like we have a reliable assessment before we move forward.
Well, I would just like to add in that I, I truly believe that the testing he did was within state specifications. And how he was supposed to do it. And everything came out within not questionable areas, but it was in a definitive yes that it passed. But I have no objection to calling dad and that, uh, Dan and asking his opinion as to whether we should have a second test or not.
Okay. Does that sound, uh, Tom and Eric, does that sound like the path forward that you're comfortable with?
Um, might even be a little overkill, but, um.
Well, just, just to satisfy, I mean, I know, I know that Steve has gone out of his way to come and talk to us. So I think, I guess to, to satisfy his concerns. Steve, does that sound satisfactory to you?
All I'm trying to do is save the town heartache down the road. Tom knows I've done several undertakes. I've done, I did eighty-two in Otis in two weeks. I've done several hundred perk tests and I'm going to tell you, not if, when that's put in there. You're going to have a problem with it, with breakout. He better put a hell of a layer, a barrier around that thing because it comes.
I would presume, I would presume the way the land lays, Steve, that there'd be a barrier around it anyway.
It'll have to be, Tom, because they're going to give breakout.
Yeah, because you've put systems in, I have. When you've got a grade, you've got to put a barrier at the bottom.
Yeah, I just don't want to come down my way because I'm, I'm coming here, I'll, I'll wait the DEP.
We'll make sure it doesn't come your way.
Yep, I'm just telling you. I'm going to guarantee.
No, I'm just telling.
If it's put in there, it's going to break out.
I don't believe if it's done with the proper material on the breakout side, it will not.
Well, let's, let's listen back to what, um, Rainey comes back with and then we'll also wait on those soil samples. And we'll see what's next for moving forward. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Coming with concerns.
We have to go. We're not leaving because I have a fight with the police.
Okay, thank you so much. Have a good night. Okay, so where are we at on our agenda? We are at, um, the Green Communities action item. We are reviewing and taking action of the FY twenty Green Communities annual report to submit to Mass EP. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a ginormous report. Is it? Is this, this is the step?
It's an Excel sheet with multiple tabs. Some of this is, uh.
I mean, it's got a lot of words.
There's a lot of words. For me to read. But I like the word complete in the status section on all of them.
Complete pretty much gets it done, right?
That makes me feel happy.
But if you go halfway through.
Yeah.
Um.
Where it says incomplete?
Say it's.
No, I don't see any.
Articulating on three. It reads in top left.
Oh, I gotta click a different tab. All right, I'm there.
Reading, read all questions below.
You'll see, uh, where it says provide a narrative, uh, rig narrative, planning changes, see what sense is made for that year.
I see at number six, provide a narrative. Yes.
There you go.
It's an overview of, uh, since, um. We were designated the Green Community, who populated figures as a baseline in twenty fifteen. Let's see, uh, today we achieved a fifteen point one percent reduction overall energy usage.
Great.
And if you go to one. Articulating three step two, which is a good thing to add a little bit to that bit. You can see you, you're going to have that year by year comparison, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, uh, for energy use, you'll see in twenty nineteen, that would be to you. Combined building use two thousand one hundred and forty-seven, reduced to one thousand nine hundred and forty, just drops. But in that narrative, it gives an explanation of why it drops like they did. It also describes, yeah, three public buildings, the library, another highway garage, closed office, as well as the.
Yeah.
It tells you which one is using more energy than the other. Based on, uh, those projects, those, uh, other mitigation projects, climate. Reduible energy mitigation projects implemented, the reduction since it has been implemented. So that's what it is. It's just giving a, 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 a report to the town wealth. Where we are today versus where we were.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when we first became Green Community. And then also giving them an update on. Future projects that are in pipeline that should continue toward our reduction goals.
So how is that, uh? I'm surprised, but how is the vehicle baseline measured? Is that just on fuel usage?
Uh, there's fuel usage, but.
I think we've upgraded our vehicles to be more.
It is fuel usage, but, um.
I mean, we got rid of some.
Yeah.
We got rid of quite a few vehicles.
We got rid of a few and I think that the ones that we're using maybe are more, um. Environmentally friendly.
Less children. Okay, I just, just a question because that was probably the biggest move, right? So.
Excuse me?
Yes, sorry.
Um, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, um, I still have a lot more to cut and a lot of debris to move. So I'm just signing off immediately.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're wel, Steve left and you're welcome to head out. I, we really appreciate you, um, joining us. That was very helpful. Thank you, Rain.
Thank you, Rain.
Thank, thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Bye.
Entry.
Bye.
Yeah, so bye.
I got it. List of vehicle retirements. Yep.
We got rid of a lot of, um.
That's cool. That's fine. Um, so what's our action item? Is to?
Well, so the front, the very front, they are just.
Is just to submit?
Oh, you, so you guys have a.
Woo! I make a motion that the chief executive officer affix her seal. To this here report.
So we do need to make a motion to approve it?
Yep.
One second.
So if you could reword his motion to say.
Whatever he said.
Make a motion to, uh.
Motion to approve and the chief executive officer to fix her.
And submit the FY twenty Green Communities annual report to the Mass Department of Energy.
Wow, look at you go.
All right, um, is there a second?
The second is it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Date of annual. And Eric didn't count. Am I, um, putting today's date on it?
I'm so disregarded.
Josh, is this today's date? Oh, eleven two. One more day. Sweating it. Will you hit this down? Um, all right, this.
It's gonna be like four years more in a Christmas.
No. It's not true. All right, um, oh, I, we'd like to take another action item. Um. Tom and I were, uh, thinking with COVID and the state that we are in right now with being in the red case. Would it make sense to meet every other week as select board members instead of weekly? And your answer is yes.
Give you something else? Well. Uh, my answer is, um, it depends on how much, uh, workload that the TA comes up with.
We, Josh says, go for it.
Yeah, I mean, I think obviously there are important items that require attention. We can plan for, we align Monday, that's a non meeting, you know what I mean?
Now, it's not like we can't come in and sign stuff, but if we have some public business where we need to, somebody to see something. I don't want that to. Sit and wait and wait if it's something that we need to.
Well, and actually that's a non meeting Monday, and I have important items that you need to address.
Can hold a meeting.
No, we're only at France all the way.
Yeah.
But you can't decide, you know, you have.
We'd have to decide on Thursday. Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So I'm totally not against believing we're going to biweekly, biweekly meetings, but I don't want the. We're, we got a good battle rhythm going. I don't want the battle rhythm to fall off and get in stuff.
Why don't we do this? We'll go to biweekly. But if something comes up in the interim, we're just going to have to come in here, even if it's only for twenty minutes.
Absolutely.
Come in and take care of what needs to be taken care of.
Very short, concise agenda. Move on.
So I'll make a motion to, um, hold select board meetings every other week, starting today.
Bi, biweekly until we're out of phase.
Until we're out of phase three, step one. In town.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So there will not be a meeting next week. Okay. Um, we already did the COVID, um. Unfinished business. Let's look at the FY twenty-two budget process and timeline. So Josh has put together a beautiful budget process for us.
The only one change. Uh, box, bullet two and box two, the town is going to issue budget instructions to all departments.
Yeah.
We're anticipating for this month, except that they might have the, uh, come today virtually in our monthly finance meeting.
You met with whom?
Our tenants.
Okay.
Um, and they're not going to be able to have a bill which was conferred. Uh, a budget document for us to start working on until about mid-December.
Okay.
The law is. COVID is backing off.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll, I'm going to update this and then we get the summer.
Okay.
So it's a little later.
Um, speaking of which, are, how are we looking for? Oh, never mind. You're going to talk about the close of FY twenty under new business. Unless you want to talk about now? No. Yeah, I mean, we might as well, right?
So we closed.
Yay! What are we looking at?
Boom. Out of five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five. You know, it's actually more than that.
Yeah.
Because we're waiting on a couple of, uh, two-year professionals.
Yeah.
Potentially following up, we're just going to.
Yep, there's money to get two thousand of chapter ninety. We're getting reverse board.
Okay.
Also, the COA sick grant, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight, we should be getting a green person in January.
Okay.
And, uh. The Green Communities grant in two thousand eighty-one.
Yeah.
That was, uh, uh, an incentive that we're getting reverse board. Um, so once we get them reversed, we can update up free cash ballots and you should see that reflected.
Okay. Good. That's exciting.
I think it would be neat if we had a plan, and I know this is just during a pop morning. It would be neat if we had a plan to, uh, pave an apron or pave the parking lot for the white church and the historic building rather than have a dirt and gravel.
So look at some pricing for.
Uh, as something to do with our free cash. Well, well, part of the agenda, I was just talking about.
The budget priority. But as an idea for free cash, um, he's talking about paving historic parking lots, the historical society and the church. Um.
Or maybe the library. We already did that.
We already did that one. Very good. Yeah, I'll consider part of that.
Town common space, yes.
So last week we, um, and our discussion was to be continued this week. Last week we noted highway garage fire. And, um, water department stuff is our top priorities for next years.
Not in the free cash water department.
Budget.
Hundred ninety-eight thousand.
Yeah, so.
The reason of that.
Hey, I lost money.
Oh, yeah.
So the water department retained that it's the reason why it's that much water. It has to do with, because of the collection of the back row. Water piece.
But also with the water department and the visit we just had. I've also discussed with Rainey about the water line going into highway garage. And he says a two-inch water line is going to be quite large for that building.
That's all they need?
Yeah, because their, their wash downs are done with a steam jetting. And they lose very little water.
What about fire safety though? I thought.
Bigger concern moving a highway or a fire department up to the, uh.
The highway?
Highway department and putting in that four-inch stanchion so that they can have a fill pipe, right?
Oh.
Yeah, that's something we're going to have to address. But as far as highway, he would be happy. With a, a two-inch line. And yeah, if you want a sprinkler to build in, we got to go all the way back to the main that's going down the street.
If we wanted to build in a sprinkler in the building?
Right, and I. I don't know. I, I'm both two minds on that, but. Uh, yeah, sprinkler in the building's a good idea, but will the main out in the street? Handle water enough to supply the sprinklers?
No. Not if they go off.
Yeah.
To charge them, yes, but to actually go off and not be like limp garden hoses after like the first thirty seconds.
Yeah. Uh, one maybe, one head maybe would be good, but.
Probably reduces our insurance though. Probably reduce our insurance cost to have sprinklers in there.
Well, I don't know. A building like that, uh. If a trap catches fire, it's so cold then. I, I really question the value of a sprinkler.
Yeah. Well, so. So we, we, we want to talk about, um. Water in our next budget. We want to talk about the highway fire. Is there anything else that's a priority for us for next year's budget?
Um, I would look at, maybe there's a better, uh, I'm, I'm going to say this wrong the way I said. I don't know how far the water line goes down.
It goes down past.
Should go past that janky corner that's like running into somebody's house?
I don't think we need to extend our water line. I think we need to repair the water line we have.
It's a replacement of a couple hundred feet of pipe. Oh, if you go from the driveway to the salt shed, right in that area, back down the road towards Blanford, it's a little pipe now.
Yeah, it just needs to.
But I think, so I think we're sort of going on a tangent. The, the water department knows what needs to be done. Gordon knows what needs to be done. He's telling us it's like a million dollar project. So that's, that's one thing that we, one thing that we need to direct Josh and our finance department to focus on is. Getting our water department house in order so that they are having, you know, creating a capital budget to have these, these projects start to line up and actually happen. Um, so another thought would be, is there anything else we want to do with this building that we see as something that's, um. That we want to have happen for next year? Um. Do we want to look at being able to use it more for public space? Is there anything else we want to sort of prioritize there? This building or?
I think we should evaluate it for solar.
We've talked about, I don't know if that's. We've, we've talked about that. I don't know if that's part of the green energy thing we could look at for the next time around. Um, that would definitely pertain to that, looking at.
But the Green Communities, uh. And I get, I guess, a pre-medical lists.
Yeah.
Energy conservation projects that qualify for, you know, unless you're also working with the other Green Communities of the Gateway Regional School District to include Gateway.
Yeah, we wanted, we want to add Gateway because Gateway's boiler needs to be replaced.
Well, my, my idea on this is, we're talking about a generator big enough to power this building.
So I guess that's probably a good um, additional focus for our budget, is, is using, updating this to be the safety complex that we've talked about.
Right, and if you put solar on it, you don't have to do that.
So, so just including those in, encompassing those ideas into a safety complex, or whatever we're calling it, was it an emergency?
Shelter.
Shelter. I mean, beyond those three things, I, those are pretty major budget things. Um, everyone else has a capital plan, I mean, I feel like police has a capital plan, fire has a decent capital plan, water's working on it, highway.
And with water, actually, I was talking with the water expert PBC, kind of brainstorming a little bit what's possible, and. There have been communities that have gotten a significant amount of money through, through the MVP action grant, the same grant we got for master planning. That has gotten a significant amount of funds to do water upgrades.
Okay.
I just gotta figure out.
Yeah, they need to be.
How creative they got to do that.
Better organized so that, like, I feel like we keep saying, well, what do you need to do? And they're like, well, so much.
And they're like, it's a million dollars, like, what can we do?
And we're like, well, what, like, can you give us one project?
There's a drinking water section for master, so this is why master planning was prioritized.
Mm-hmm.
Because there is a whole lot going on in each of these areas, so, and, and yet, we have yet to determine what, as a community, where, where our focuses are in each of these areas.
Yeah, so what, where the focuses?
There is a drinking water section that we'll be peening on it.
Okay.
Again, when, when next time you ask that question, it will.
So like, I feel like this project that we're talking about, like, we almost need to like, section it off, and like, what's our first project, what's a cost estimate, but where can we look for help? Right, I don't know, I mean, it just feels like this big overwhelming idea every time it's explained to us, and we never really get anywhere with it.
Right.
Look, that water line on Chester, did you want to do like, remember five hundred feet, by the way?
I, so to me, the, what Gordon keeps talking about, which feels like a major priority to me, is this line going down here. And the fact that it's like, old and it's closed probably down to one inch where it's, where it's really corroded. He keeps talking about when we did that road, it was like, remember it was last minute, like, oh, can we put a water line in, but no, we need five hundred thousand, a million dollars to do it.
Yeah, we need to put in four hundred.
And it was like, well, no.
You guys can't pave and you can't.
We can't, yeah, and, and so that, to me, that seems like it's a priority, I feel like they've done a lot on Chester Road. That they needed to do, I don't know what that extension of five hundred feet does for the water line, besides, I mean, is it just offering it to a new customer, cause to me. In my mind, that doesn't feel like a top priority as, as, as much as repairing the water lines and bringing them up to fire code.
As we go forward with a highway garage, there's no reason that we can't incorporate the addition of, the additional footage of that line as a construction cost because we decided to put a building there. I mean, it's a municipal construction cost. So, their plan needs to focus on the rest of the stuff.
But I think that line already runs by where we wanna put the highway garage.
Right, no, that, that line that they wanna replace. Will make it so that if the highway garage is drawing water, it won't take away from the people that live.
Okay, so then that would be encompassed as part of. Yes, that makes sense.
Municipal change, we just put it in that budget.
See, it's like any of our other water lines. If you put a big draw on any of these lines, the people.
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna be losing water.
Yeah.
But is that because we don't, uh, my question goes to that, is, is that because we don't have a tower, we don't have a tank?
No, it's because our lines are all straight line, there's no loops. See, if the water's interrupted coming this way, there's no water to come around this way.
Coming on the backside.
Yeah.
So what do we need to do, okay.
So.
Oh, man.
So. So is part of, when we're talking highway, when we're telling Josh that highway garage has to be one of our priorities, are we also saying? That updating the current highway garage.
Well, glad you're mentioning that.
To, that's gotta also be a priority.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned, cause the last meeting we had, um, building group, um, last week. Which we wanted to bring up this evening as well, is to, as we proceed forward with securing the OPM.
Mm-hmm.
How do, uh, owner's project manager, how do you feel about combining this project as one?
I, I think that's a great idea, I think that the timing has to be that they're combined as one, otherwise we end up in limbo, yeah.
When they, when they move out, we'll have a contractor moving in to revamp that building.
Well, the OPM is managing.
Both.
Contractors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if contractors are coming to do the highway garage, and some of that include whatever their skill set and expertise and.
And won't we get a better price if we're?
Right, there's a better price element.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We're uh.
By the highway garage, and then just blow up.
Where, there's a group of us going tomorrow from the fire department to look at that garage.
Yep.
And so we can make some recommendations to the building committee.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, we were tasked with coming up with the project narrative or description, so both, both Randy and then the fire guys are looking at um, their individual needs.
Perfect.
Putting it on paper so that.
I think we save money all around, and when you're talking, when you're talking about looking at, you know, we're looking at a headhunter for a contractor, I mean. Then it encompasses everything, and then we're just paying that fee for one, instead of doing it again to do the fire, right?
The fire building folks might find some things that could be done prior to doing anything, right, if it's, oh, hey, we know, I'm just gonna make something up, but if you know that. If we extended the back wall section like six feet, we could park two vehicles in here.
Yeah.
Well, we could pour a foundation and cube ups, and when they move out, knock the wall out, and you got your extra few six feet, there's some steps we can take that are potentially more helpful.
Yeah.
Well.
They know what they are, right, we don't know what they are.
Yeah, I'm thinking that probably, we're gonna recommend a room on the end towards Route twenty-three. Which will open up that section where his office is now, and that, we can use it for. You know, whole storage, the refilling station for the Scott Airpass.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it'll be by itself, where people can work at it without being elbowed by a fire truck.
Yeah.
Such a matter, uh.
A bathroom would be nice.
I think they have.
A good one would be different.
I think they just didn't have a door.
I think one of the things that probably will happen is that whole room right there is gonna disappear.
It's got the heat in it, right?
Well, we wanna change, we wanna change to a modern heating system.
Yeah.
So yes, the answer is yes, please roll those into one, absolutely.
You know, so I, I, I think you'll be pleased with the results.
Um, does that sound like a good plan from select board, do you want more from us, or do you have a pretty clear idea?
The only, the only reason why, so, we actually, the last time we met, met with an OPM, we zoomed in.
Yeah.
And it was very, very helpful and enlightening.
Okay.
Um, and, and that's where that idea came and said, well, maybe it's a good idea.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Cause it, it's, the, the level of uh, detail, um, that they, that these guys, they come in and, and try to understand your need and make sure that it happens.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it was, it was just insightful.
Good.
That'd be a good idea to people at once.
Okay.
Obviously, it's all gonna be contingent on what the costs are and what we.
Yeah.
Can't do.
Well.
Hundred grand.
And talking with the chief. And we don't want a palace, but we want something that's neat, clean, and easy to keep clean.
Yeah.
You have to polish all those country boards.
Okay, so what's next, Josh? More changes, uh, otherwise it's pretty much as is on the budget calendar, as it was last year?
Almost with that one change of.
Okay.
A little bit, um, so that means, once we send out a budget instruction, we usually ask for the budget by January one.
Yeah.
And they come rolling in slowly, uh, but we'll push that date a little bit more further.
Okay.
But that's it, that's the.
But that's it, alright.
What we can expect until now and now meeting.
Um. Yeah.
I know, but I didn't hear a number.
Just shy of eight hundred grand.
Well.
Well, it depends, we're waiting on a couple things, right now it's at five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five.
Right. But then we have some.
But possibly.
We have almost a hundred and seventy thousand payback.
Coming in, grants and whatnot.
Chapter ninety that's due back to the town, and some other things that will make him in a, increase the free.
Maybe we can buy some new curtains for the sage?
You want a more comfortable chair?
I want, I want curtains back up there so that we can, you know, once this covid business goes away, we can start to use it as a community space and maybe do some stuff up there, that would be nice. Um, okay, so we're on updated expense report, so where, what are we, what's the percentage we're supposed to be at? July, August, September, October, four months in to, so that's a quarter, so twenty-five percent? No?
Yes.
No, four, no, it should be more than twenty-five percent, we were at thirty-five percent last time we looked.
September, October, four months.
Four months.
Four goes in twelve.
That's a third. I was like, hold on a second.
Go!
Don't be messing, don't be messing with my math, it's already sketchy enough.
Well, we have some people that are seriously underspent. Look at the select board stipends, they're only at twenty-two percent.
Raise, raise their pay, um.
Select word secretary salary is only at twenty-eight percent, come on, there's five percent left on the table there.
I ended up putting in more hours later in the year.
We got.
And I got in trouble this year, so.
Yeah. At TA, he can be pretty tough. Fifty-two, town clerk assistance rocking it at fifty-two percent.
Yep, that was, that's election stuff. I get nervous every time I say that, tree ward. Uh, forty-five percent for highway overtime, there's, there's really nothing that's, we haven't talked about already.
No, haven't gone down the road a time or two already. Just those upfront expenditures that are starting to catch up with the rest of the calendar year.
Question, Mary?
Uh, do, do we know when we're gonna get reimbursed from the CARES Act?
We just sent it in last week.
Yeah, last week.
Will be January, February, March, just, I'm looking for the offset.
I can't imagine it's gonna be quick. Um, I don't have any questions on the expense report, it looks good. Alright, town clerk update?
Um, we had over three hundred mail-ins and we're seeing some early voting, which is a good third of our nine hundred and now nine sixty registered voters. So traffic will, we hope be reasonable tomorrow. We've got twelve brand-new voting booths.
Good.
Up one side and across the stage, and the idea is to get as many people through as quickly as possible, but giving them adequate time to do the activity.
What time do you open?
Seven AM to eight PM.
So, and then you guys will be here counting?
We will be here counting tomorrow.
So, I'm just curious, how many, do you know off the top of your head, how many people voted in twenty sixteen election?
Uh, sixty-one or two percent, which is roughly two-thirds of our then nine hundred and twenty voters.
So we've already had about half of that?
Yeah.
Interesting, okay.
Oh, we had six hundred and forty, I think, in the last election.
Yeah.
Two-thirds Trump, and one quarter for whoever the other candidate was.
Yeah, okay, moving on.
Something like that.
Um, we've got, and now, Mary, put on your other hat, and I'll give us a library update, please.
I, I got finally a quote from Ribbit Gutters today.
Oh, good, thank you.
And he, if you saw the email for Copper Gutters, it was seventeen thousand dollars.
Woo!
This is the only contractor between Springfield and Berkshire County, I contacted five of them, who even called back, and this guy actually came out.
Okay.
Do you want me to?
Who was that one from, Mary?
I'm sorry, what?
Well, I have a quote in front of me here for.
Ribbit, that's from Ribbit.
Same guy, yeah.
That's the guy that came out.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and the.
Cause I'm not hearing her, her voice is too soft.
Okay, what do you see for a total on that?
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand four hundred and fifty-eight.
Okay.
Other quote she had was for Copper Gutters at seventeen thousand.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure.
Sounds lovely.
Yeah.
So do we need more quotes, um, for nine thousand, I think it's above the mark where we need, no, ten grand?
Well, I think less than ten grand, it's sound business.
It's sound business, um, so you've called several and haven't heard back?
I called five altogether, and Ribbit was the only one.
To respond.
Are any of your family members employed by Ribbit?
No.
You know, that's uh. I had those leaf guard gutters fly by my house.
Do we wanna kick it to finance?
Well, I, I've got roughly the same length, and it was roughly the same one.
Who did your leaf gutters? Who did your leaf guards?
Leaf guard.
Okay.
They came up from down east and did the job, and they did a great job, so. If you want, Mary, I'll give you a call with their address, phone number, whatever. Maybe, maybe they can do the library for what they did at our house, but I've got a lot of chips and tags and whatever, so. The library's kinda straightforward at this point.
So we'll get one more quote?
Okay, yeah, and it's something that you won't have to worry about maintenance, cleaning them. They'll guarantee you, if something happens, they'll come up and clean it for you.
Okay. Okay, so maybe just one more quote, and then we'll talk about it, um, could you, could we put it on action item for our next meeting then? Um, and then we can talk to finance.
If you don't hear from me by noon time tomorrow, call me at lunchtime.
How about Wednesday?
Oh, yeah, tomorrow's gonna.
I won't be around Wednesday.
Tomorrow's gonna be a little crazy for Mary, I think.
I've gotta do some porch work for my daughter.
How many coworkers do you have?
Oh, a lot.
If we get, and we got copper too.
You got police presence?
We're better, yeah, he, he said we would be there.
Did we ever figure out what happened with the sign that was purposely driven down? No.
Did it survive?
No.
Was it one of our April sign?
It, no, it was one of the, the fire, the fire department, I had forgotten to get the cones from Randy. So the fire department had cones, but they had these collapsible ones.
Oh, okay, yep.
And the guy delivered and ran it down, and it has a little blue sign on the top that says, no polluting. Well, we have since been told, we only have to have a hundred and fifty-foot rule for the election, that's what the law says, for.
An election day.
Election, we don't have to have it for early voting.
Okay.
Which makes no sense.
That doesn't make any sense at all.
But there it is.
Oh, great.
So, we've got, um, John Hoppy brought us up some sturdy cones, they're not tractor, they're no service.
Okay. Alright, do we have any other, do you have any other old or new business for us, Josh?
Um, so, another memory that I was talking about as well, because of these concerns around election. The security of our drop boxes, um, so Mary, did you wanna touch on that?
Okay, um.
Do we have a camera facing out there, is that? Is there a camera facing the lock, the?
There is a camera, we do, we, it's, the angle's not perfect, but we can see anybody.
Sure.
Approaching the drop box.
Okay.
But the Secretary of State's office is really pushing for us all, temp works, to have a ballot box. That can be moved from outside to the lobby, and then put back out the next day, so. So, rather than bolted down.
I feel like someone could steal that.
It, it's coming on.
Right, it's a ballot over rope.
And it's got, um, anyway, yes, that's a possibility, if anybody wanted to take it, they could push it out, shut it down, it's a room. Um, so we ordered a new drop box specifically for ballots, it'll have both on it, drop box. And it's on casters, it's five feet, two inches, no, two inches tall, it's about two and a half feet square.
Okay.
And it weighs an awful lot.
And it's just out during elections?
It's just out during elections.
You have a chain for said box. So it doesn't grab off.
We'll figure it out, we're not always here, you know, there's, yeah, I mean, there's nobody here. On Fridays, example, or chat meetings or something, there's nobody here often.
I think yours is good, right idea to put a dip end in the ground and a lock and a chain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we can, we can run it out.
Yeah, maybe we'll bolt, bolt it to the ground, you know, not bolt it, but chain it.
Put a chain.
Yeah.
Typically, people would put it in the drop box outside. Right now?
Because of the incident in Boston. This has raised the alert level.
Okay.
In effect, they've worked the balance.
Right.
Yeah.
And so this is what they're trying to combat, I, I get that.
Wow, that's really a shame.
So, we all, it's reversible though, although we pay for it, I guess, the Secretary's office or.
Some, some, somebody in the Secretary of State's office, uh.
We're voting, yeah.
Vote, hire a vote.
Okay.
So, Mary, we found one, uh, which I guess already shared with the Secretary of State's office, it's a good.
Oh, good, okay.
Uh, except that we have to pay for it, uh, first.
And then we'll, yeah.
It'll be twenty two hundred dollars for this one specifically.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I can do that in capital.
And then get reimbursed?
Well, just get reimbursed.
Yeah. Okay.
You got a select with reserve fund?
No.
Wow, like it's your own purse, look at it go.
No, I'm only, we're already at seventy five percent in that fund. We only.
No, we're not.
The selectments.
No, 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 the reserve fund.
Oh, I thought you meant selectments expense.
Cause we got fifty or sixty.
I mean, it doesn't really matter, it's gonna be reimbursed, so I guess it's really not.
Yeah.
We have to pay for it and show something from the town that says, yes, we paid it by November twentieth.
Okay. I mean, it don't think really matters, right? I was gonna say, we only have like a hu, like one thousand nine hundred left in the selectment.
Yeah, that's just salaries.
No, no, not salaries, I'm talking selectment expense.
Oh, yeah, that's right, just made to take that extra money.
Yes, that's awesome.
Alright, um, and I have another big trust accounts.
Okay. I saw your message.
Yeah. So, alright, first, Watson Park, Watson Park. Um, for many years, I guess, it's been understand, folks have understood that there is an expendable.
Yeah.
And there's a non expendable.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we went over, um, uh, agreement, consulted with town council for interpretation. And what's non expendable is about forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, what you have in there currently is a lot. Is, uh, three hundred and sixty four thousand dollars.
Doesn't mean we wanna spend it all.
Doesn't mean you wanna spend it, you wanted to keep collecting it.
You could build us a pavilion.
There's that pavilion we've been wanting, oh, boy! I'm getting excited, we're gonna name it the Levakis Pavilion.
Probably there was some interest in getting that stone wall repaired.
Yes, can we please move forward with that?
Does he need to talk to you about the, the, uh, mower that he uses is getting there?
Yeah. It's got a lot of miles on it, yeah.
I mean, we've already spent, you know, much.
Fixing it, yeah.
Well, and he stops manscaping trees and stuff out there like we told him not to.
Manscaping.
Paying attention to, uh, trying to fix his mower.
Well, we've repaired the mower, I think it might be time to offload it and get a new one.
Is that their zero turn mower?
It's a zero turn.
How old is that?
I'd have, we'd have to ask him, we can see how many miles are on it, but I, I mean, what, they're about four thousand hours.
It seems like that, if you look at hours.
Yeah. So I, they're not that expensive, I don't think, for a new one.
Yeah, about six grand. Six and nine.
And I think we've already put a couple thousand in repairs in it.
Here, this one right here. One thirty one, a third big, three damn, thirty one. That reserve account, that's zero.
I tell you, if we really wanted to.
That way it goes right back into it.
If we really wanted to save money in the long run. We'd get one of those Toro maintenance mowers.
Yeah.
They're, you're looking at ten or twelve grand, I think, or more. But they've got a life expectancy of twenty years. It might be cost effective.
Oh, really?
Well, say you get one that, for six thousand that lasts five years, and I buy another one.
Yeah.
And at the end of four years, you're gonna start putting money in it.
Yeah.
You're getting up there where the, the real expensive one with a good warranty is still going.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
And nothing runs like a deer.
So, um, would you, can we at this time of year can, look, move forward with the repair on the wall, or do we need to wait until spring at this point?
I mean, I can see, see if it's a price course.
Yeah.
I'm like, so you got a deer to call me?
Uh, what about it?
Steve General's son.
Is he?
Yeah, Cardy gave me.
Yeah?
Oh, son-in-law, yeah. Son-in-law, I think.
The only, the only other thing I have.
Oh, no, maybe not, does he have a son? I didn't realize he had a son.
Did you ask him?
I did, I said, Steve, do you have any relation to Steve General, the?
Oh, I didn't realize he had a son.
He went, yeah, that's my son.
You sure he doesn't, you sure he wasn't calling your wife?
Funny you say it.
No, I asked yours about it too, cause I saw the wall.
Speaking of the park, have the people come to put it to bed yet?
There's, there's a, uh.
The flower beds.
When you're driving into Westfield on twenty three, or on twenty, before you get to the, the Massachusetts Air National Guard Base there. On the left, there's a house that just put up a stone wall around, and that's the wall, I watched him out there knocking the hell out of those stones doing it, that's where I got his card from. So it's either him, or there's, uh, I don't know, you can check and see if the Bannick Landscaping does it.
Uh, Stonemason?
Yeah.
Well, we've.
I'll talk to him.
We've had someone in the past that actually was doing a reconstruction.
The other boyfriend's brother is a stonemason, yeah, I know, it's confusing, but anyway.
Um, the guy that did the front.
So I'll have to look at.
The front, um, gates might be worth contacting to.
Just give him Josh's number and Josh, just give his number to Josh, Josh will read the notes for both of them.
Well, I'll have to, I'll have to call Pat and have him give me his brother's number, cause I don't know, he gave me a card, but it's somewhere.
Now you got two numbers to get out by June tomorrow.
Mary, question?
Your, your mom might, might remember the spell of his first name, but his wife is Melissa Mason, they were in a co-op. And he always was called Mason, the Mason, because he's deep Mason.
Oh, really?
But he's Derek, Derek Mason's son.
Okay.
And lives, I believe, he's now there on Western Street.
Okay, well, I know the guy that did the gates in the front, it wasn't just a repair, he was like a historical, do you know, do you remember what I'm talking about? Historic, the Historical Society made a big deal about hiring him because it's a historical stone wall and they wanted it to be done a certain way.
He was a, uh.
So we might wanna reach out to him, and I think he had actually given us a bid on it.
A reconstructor or something?
Yeah, yeah. Um.
Historical restoration that stumbled.
So, yeah, Josh, remember the, um, the women's landscaping, I can't, they're supposed to come in the fall? And put, is that right, is it fall or winter to put the flower beds, like?
To bed.
To bed for the.
Hurry up or it's gonna be too late.
There, they, I believe that per their contract, they were coming in the end of the season and then then beginning of the season, so they should be coming soon to like close up the beds, they like, they'll make sure that there's any like dead stuff pulled and clipped and trimmed.
And winter over the bulbs and all that stuff.
Yeah. So just ask her if they're com, I think in their contract, they come up to winterize, basically. The Bicentennial Park and Watson Park. So they should be coming soon.
The other one is the Tiffany Trust Cemetery.
Yes.
Now, according to that trust, there is no non expendable, one hundred percent of it is expendable.
Well, we don't wanna do that.
Well, what we have left is eighty thousand and hundred and twenty one dollars.
Okay.
There's enough for four, five mowing seasons and it's done.
Yeah, but it's earning interest.
We're gonna have to start budgeting.
Yeah.
And take it on, on the costs, uh, to maintain the grounds on there. And we're looking at anywhere between a combined budget from expenses and salary to is like twenty one thousand dollars, I think.
Or?
So, but doesn't that, doesn't that make an interest that is something that's?
Well, if we don't touch this and let it mature more.
Yeah.
Other than that, they, so the reason why it's down to eighty thousand, it used to be three hundred plus eighty thousand, that twenty two.
Somebody built a shit.
But over the years, that's what they want on the salary, they've been developing, expecting to, to buy equipment.
So we need to.
And they've just been.
So if we're, I guess this would be my math question, what does the Tiffany fund need to be to produce a yearly expendable of twenty one thousand?
What does the one Tiffany?
What is the Tiffany?
That's the research we gotta do.
Yeah.
I think with the Watson, but what is the?
It's gotta have a twenty percent rate of return to do that on any grant.
So, we should, so, okay, so what, what does it have to be?
If it has an annual rate of return of ten percent, which would be average.
That would be average.
And that's gonna get you eight grand a year.
So we need it to be at two hundred thousand, two hundred and ten thousand?
Ish, and not spend any more than twenty one thousand a year.
I got something for you to ask, too, Jerry. They put a two hundred and seventy five gallon tank of the cemetery on the hill. They piped it down to one or two faucets. And the fire department used to keep it full. And people could go up there and get water for the flowers around the graves and whatever. I don't know if that's even still there, collapsed or what. But, uh, I'd like to see it in operation again. Uh, you, you'd see a lot of people utilizing it to work around their, their family plots and whatever.
Yeah. That's a good point.
TJ's got some explaining to do.
Where is he? Um, okay, so I guess that would be, the question would be, if it's, if we're getting ten percent, how long would it take to get to mature to two hundred and ten thousand?
By spending zero.
By spending zero and us budgeting the twenty one thousand, so we wanna bring it back to a point where we don't have to budget.
On average, seven and a half to ten years to double your.
Damn, so we're looking at more than ten years.
So then you're one sixty, so you're looking at fifteen years to age yourself to. Or you adopt the other principle and that when it plays out, the cemetery's just become a responsibility of the town, which is what they're working for.
Yeah, they would give it to us and we'll go down it, cause we don't.
Two hundred thousand, big night by the selectmen.
So I guess it's a question for Sarah and, um, the accounting, what they would recommend, okay. Thank you for doing that research.
And the final thing I had, at your next select ward meeting, there'll be, um, an agreement in front of you to discuss and approve, really, um, between town and bird park, um, to assist through, uh, the designing process for veteran department.
Okay.
Um, there was an internal, there is an internal group we put together, myself, Linda from Historical, Dr. Gopie, Tom's participating, and Mary. Um, as an example, here I'm just, to understand what are next, what are the areas, different options are there? To do what is we wanna accomplish at the park and pillar, there were a lot of things, uh, that we talked about. And a lot of things we need to figure out as far as the commission, um, is concerned, but as far as the next step. There were two options that were before, there was a uh, contest option, right, an art artist contest option. Um, or, uh, we solicit, uh, not price quotes, but it's an invitation of qualifications where folks who have done this in other communities submit their work of what they have done, their, their, uh.
Like a design, okay.
Um, uh, we check it out, we look, and see what's best for what we like to see happen, where money is needed. And at that point, you select a person that you wanna, um, that you wanna negotiate contract with.
Okay. And I'd love to, I think the timing's great, since we're looking at changing it over to the Highway Department to sort of maybe incorp, incorporate that somehow into, you just knowing it's gonna be there, and I don't know, somehow into the design.
We wanna try carefully to move forward this, you know, we got a very passionate discussion on, like, the, the area.
Yeah.
Part, um, being within the, what's known as the town commons. And, uh, and I know Eric, we talked before, how, you know, if we're gonna do that, how do we make, how do we support the interconnectedness? Will we connect that part with the hill across the street? Um, not connect it as a limited street, like you have to do a wide border.
But somehow, yeah. Yeah.
But that maybe even goes further than that, it's, uh.
Because there's that big beautiful tree at the top of the hill that has a fence around it and a plaque on it. It would be nice to do maybe some, some clearing so that it's, it's understood.
But that goes further than just Veterans Park.
Yeah, maybe some stone stairs.
We've got ten acres up there.
Maybe some stone stairs or something that's connecting it, that's, you know.
What you're calling Veterans Park is town common.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Parks, that is how it's common.
Yeah.
But the, the bigger theme is how do we connect the elements that are in the town common to each other? And then the, then the extension of that is when you have a recreational trails and parks program? That when people wanna take a walk, they take a walk, and they walk by these things because these things are all on the walking down.
None of them are connected.
It doesn't feel like it's on, on town common.
Not, they're not physically.
Well, it doesn't feel like a town common, cause there isn't a pound there.
So there was a large, a larger.
A pound.
A dog pound?
Yeah, they, well, no.
We can move the hut.
You go to Sturbridge Village or any other historical interpreted place. And part of the village was the pound, and it was a squared off, well, the one at Sturbridge is a stone wall.
Yeah.
And any wavered animals were put there.
Yep, any, not just dogs, goats, sheep.
Cow, sheep, cow.
Yeah, you could herd, yeah, yes. We stud, we studied this in, uh, in world history last year.
I know there's a way that, that there's, I don't know, we see, we see what happens in other, I'm sure there's a way to recon, not reconstruct, but make it work.
Yeah, I think, I think, I love the idea of looking at some other, some architects or, you know, whatever, I don't know what you would call them, design, landscape designers.
I think we oughta go back in the historical record.
And look at, and look at what are their ideas for connecting, you've got that cemetery, you've got the common, and then you've got that beautiful tree.
I tried.
Do you know the tree I'm talking about?
It's a restaurant.
It's neat because you never, you don't realize it's there.
It's a common, really.
But if you stand at the church and look across.
Well, yeah, it's.
There is a tree with this bit, and you're like, why is that tree in the middle of the, but it's really nice, it's got like a plaque and a little, so it'd be nice to incorporate it.
So, so.
Well, it's pretty, but we still have this as a historical thing. And maybe there's rules about how much we can do with town common.
There are.
Right, and, and all of that can be navigated. So, the other thing too, is that I'm just focusing on the. So, the other thing too, instead of just focusing on the veterans, right now, currently, there's a longing and opportunity to be that focus. Do we take a step further and as we go through the, go through this process, look at the whole Town Common area?
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity because I don't, I mean, I didn't even realize that they existed until the whole Town Common. I mean, I knew that we had the little Veteran Park there, but I didn't know that we had so much more space there. Yeah, yeah, I think it'd be great to, to see.
I say we protest.
Yeah.
And it, it's gonna be something that's helping our master planning, talking about green space.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know.
And Eric wants to pave it.
Yeah.
pave little pieces of it. For the benefit of the, of the town.
There's a stone up there that, years ago, I went out and a fucker brush and gut with a loader and brought back and the highway crew sent it on the Town Common. I took it to Vietnam, the more.
Uh, yeah.
We got it up off of, well, down memory old soapstone quarry was off of Chasterville.
Nice. Yeah, I think that's a great opportunity for us to expand what's up there.
Right, lots, lots of time for it.
Yeah, that's exciting. Yeah, I agree.
It's fun stuff.
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing, because of COVID and the changes, yeah, that, that, I don't know, for the next two weeks, for November seventh, information session with, uh, Rockland and Versi Flyer, it's not gonna be in person, it's all.
All Zoom, okay.
We'll start getting that information out there too.
We had one this last Saturday?
No.
No?
It's next Saturday. Just so you're aware, it's all gonna be.
So, we probably need a phone notification to tell people that too. Make sure it sounds all Saturday night live.
Phone and make sure.
Gotta make sure that that, that message has the like HTTPS, colon backslash backslash whack whack one twenty-three, so it means the whack. So that people could follow that.
Are we good? Is that all? All right, so let's, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Jurn, it's seven thirty-five, it's seven thirty-four. Done and done.
Done and done it?
I always quote the, um.
All right, we should've kept talking.
Hey, did you, when I was talking earlier, now I can't think of it, but there was, well, yeah, there was a joke in a new Reader's Digest.
Josh doesn't know what a Reader's Digest is, would you please let him know?
Wait, wait till he unzooms us. Bye, Bob! Mr. Twynan, we miss you.
Is it Twiman or T. Wyman?
Twiman.
Well, Twiman.
It's Twiman.
Nicest man in town.
Yeah, she is.
Who was the Wyman that passed that on the trail?